Could everyone take a seat, please? We're going to begin our meeting very soon. Could everybody find a seat, please? We'll sign those later, okay? Okay, I need everybody to take a seat right now so we can start the meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance as we always do. We have student suspensions and expulsions to report out of closed session. I need a motion on Resolution Numbers 001 and 002.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
That was moved by Director Carl, seconded by Director Kristoff. Roll call vote, please.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Hanil?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Gonzalez?
Aye.
President J?
Aye.
There were no reportable actions taken in closed session. Are there any statements of abstention tonight? Nine, yes?
I'll be abstaining on the textbook adoption.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be abstaining on the minutes.
All right.
I'm sorry, did you say adjustments?
You don't have anything to abstain from tonight, right? You don't have anything to abstain from?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
I didn't hear what you said.
That's all right. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes.
All right. Here we go wrong.
I wasn't sure. Five, let's see, five point, E5.4, please.
President J. President J. Also, I need to pull off Item E5.3. That contract is not ready. There's some more information that was left off of it.
Okay, so whoever's going to make this motion is going to keep track of that, right? Director Carl? Thank you. Let's see here. Having a hard time reading out of my glasses. Any board member requests for information? Approval of the minutes for the September 14th meeting.
So move?
Second.
Moved by Director Kristoff, seconded by Director Hanil. Roll call vote, please.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Sorry, Director Hanil?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Gonzalez?
Aye.
President J?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to a very fun part of the evening. This is a special presentation honoring the nominees and award winners for excellence in education. Okay. Thank you. So, we had 29 nominees for this award this year. And tonight, we're going to invite the five winners up, award winners up. And when they call your name, if you could come up and stand next to me, and then when the next person comes up, at the end, I'd like to have a photo op so that you can all have your picture taken together, okay? So, we are pleased once again to publicly recognize our teachers, who were chosen as the winners of the Santa Rosa Chamber of Commerce Excellent in Education Awards. The following six teachers represent everything we work to provide our students and all the teachers who prepare our students for the future beyond Santa Rosa City Schools. Again, it is a privilege and an honor to recognize the following teachers. And first up is Laura Lee. Is Laura here tonight? Laura Lee is a second grade teacher at James Monroe Elementary School. She has been a teacher for Santa Rosa City Schools for more than 20 years. She is a teacher that is constantly willing to go above and beyond to meet the needs of her students. She works hard, and she expects her students to work at least as hard as she does. Although Monroe has over 70% second language learners, she does not let that stop her from communicating with parents and having high expectations for her students. One would think that a teacher of 20-plus years may have settled into a teaching routine that is repeated every year. Not Laura. These past few years have been transformative for Laura. While she always had high professional standards for teaching and communicating with students and parents, Laura has been reflective in her practice as she attended numerous trainings to improve her professional practice, such as Guided Language Acquisition Design, which means, stands for, or the acronym? GLAD. Right. California Math Project, Lexia, Close Reading, and Let's Go Learn. Putting acquired skills into practice from these trainings have yielded a more academically rigorous interactive classroom for her second graders. She is a loved and admired member of our school community. Thank you for your hard work. Now, I'd like to call down David Haney. I saw that big sigh. This is relatively painless. It's going to be over very soon. David joined the Burbank staff in 1989. He has motivated, inspired, prodded, and cajoled Burbank students to higher reading scores and better math skills for the past 27 years. By most accounts, this man is one of the most energetic, hardworking, and dedicated teachers on staff. He is as completely immersed in supporting school functions as he is in providing his students with reading opportunities. During the final week of the 2016 school year, Mr. Haney led Burbank's Math Olympics, an end-of-year event that gives our students a chance to compete against each other in mathematics. A few weeks before Math Olympics, Mr. Haney organized the emceed, a school-wide event called "An Evening to Read Around the Campfire." Over 100 students and parents attended. That's pretty hard to make that happen. Good job. The 2015-16 school year was the last that David Miles Haney will serve as a teacher for our Burbank community. He's retiring. He has promised to return, though, to host "Reading Around the Campfire" and to organize Math Olympics. Why? Because he will always care about our kids. Next up is Caitlin Wayhall. Is Caitlin not here? No. Maybe she'll come. Next up is then Sandy Martin. Is Sandy here? For some people, just the phrase "middle school student" causes the forehead to wrinkle up and tension to crawl up through the shoulder blades and settle into the neck. This teacher not only survives, she thrives with middle schoolers. And not only does she thrive, but everything in her wake stands up and takes notice. Sandy Martin is the epitome of excellence. She teaches English and Leadership at Slater Middle School. Her contributions to her school are immeasurable. Sandy runs the leadership program with nearly reckless abandon. What's going on over there? She encourages students to not only make a difference in their school community, but in their local and global communities as well. Under her guidance, Slater students raised funds to clean drinking water, build schools, and provide school supplies to children in Africa. In our local community, students participate every year in community service, such as gathering and distributing food for local food banks. Students also run a holiday giving tree and gather gifts for over 100 people each year, as well as reaching out in the community when disaster strikes. Sandy Martin has been an English teacher for 33 years. She has developed common rubrics for her department, scored essays school-wide, and has continued her work in common course strategies. She makes English fun, middle school style. Students rap poems, sing stanzas, and visualize settings. Last year, Sandy worked on struggling ELA students and created content and delivery that engage and excited the class. Nearly every student gained at least two grade levels academically. Thank you so much for your hard work. Is Joe Sims here? No Joe? Okay. As a teacher, mentor, advisor, and alumnus, he exemplifies what it is to be a Puma. In his role as a teacher and mentor, Mr. Sims is an integral part of the Global Perspectives Corps of Ninth Grade English and Humanities classes. He works closely, yes, yes he does. He works closely and collaboratively with his teaching partner and both the English and Social Studies Departments to develop cross-curricular field days and projects and to bring in new literature. In addition, Mr. Sims created and taught a themed senior selective class that focused on science fiction and fantasy. His selective quickly became the favorite choice for seniors because of his enthusiasm and the many ways he engages students. For example, Mr. Sims built a stage in his classroom so that scenes from the various novels could be acted out in class. Outside of the classroom, Mr. Sims is involved with many aspects of improving the school culture and environment. As an advisor for the Positive Energy Club, he has organized several campus cleanup days. Additionally, Mr. Sims has been the driving force in the creation of three mural projects and the building of a Zen garden rock. Now, if there's one person in this audience who does not need their own private Zen rock garden, I'd like to know, because I would love one. Of course, of special note is the fact that Mr. Sims does not just organize these events. He participates with students and works just as hard as they do. Mr. Sims served as a WASC focus group leader, as well as served as a member of the Facility's Master Planning Committee. In both of these capacities, his focus was on creating an optimal physical environment for Maria Creer High School students, past, present, and future. Thank you so much for your work. And our final award winner is Christy Coleman, Elsie Allen High School. Is Christy here? Well, you're going to hear about Christy anyway, so. In her five, I'm sorry, in her first eight years of teaching, Christy Coleman took a fledgling dance program, desperately in need of inspiration, and transformed it into a highly functioning, creative, soulful means of expression for all of her dance students. We are so proud of her contribution to the Performing Arts Department and the overall culture of Elsie Allen High School, the deep connection she makes with all of her students, and the thoughtful, rich collaboration she selflessly provides in her work with her colleagues. Mrs. Coleman has complete buy-in from her dance students. Each dance show that Christy directs incorporates themes developed and voted on by her classes. Her most advanced students then design and teach their own choreography to their peers. The performances are moving, majestic masterpieces, and consistently sell out every year. For many students, the dance show is the apex of artistic achievement for them in their cumulative high school experience. Every student in Miss Coleman's class feels loved and appreciated. Not only does Christy teach her students exceptional dance technique and physical health and well-being, but she also promotes a positive self-image outside of the classroom, reminding students of her favorite quote every day, "Make good choices." Many students see her as one of the first students they could truly confide in. Thank you, Miss Coleman. And, I don't, Caitlin, is Caitlin? No, no. So, I'd like to read this on Caitlin, too, because all of these teachers are very exceptional. And their peers at their schools and the leadership at their schools worked hard to get them these awards and get them the recognition that they deserve. So, I'd like to read this about Caitlin. Caitlin Wayhall began her career at Rincon Valley Middle School as a 12-year-old girl. She now collaborates with many of her teachers from seventh grade. It's always a privilege to hire a former student. Caitlin Wayhall is organized, tech-savvy, innovative, and high-energy. She is generous with her time and support, not only with students, but with other staff as well, to promote best practices across the board. Her management of the physical classroom and her digital classroom space is unparalleled. She has created a phenomenal website for both students and parent use. She lists all of her daily homework, hints, and strategies. Her video tutorials are available for many lessons and help to support the struggling learners. The website is also an excellent example for other staff to utilize as a template as they create their own websites. Miss Wayhall has continued the family tradition of becoming an exemplary staff member. Congratulations to Miss Wayhall. So Diane, could you step forward with me? While they're taking the picture, I'd like any of the other nominees to come down and also take a picture. Heather Heckler, Michelle Maslin, Rosie Muldoon, Louise Silk, Carolyn Smith, Alexis Behrens, Robyn Hedes, Kaysha King, Kathy Lacy, Jessica McNiff, Jan Meyer, Cynthia Miles, Natasha Whitfield, Trevor Brady, Karen Koster, Debbie Grove, Brian Halloran, Simone Harris, Jim Holland, Kenny Knowlton, Susan Pearson. Please come down if you're here so we can take a picture. Congratulations to all of you. I think they have to squeeze in. You guys need to squeeze in. Tonight, we, you only heard the story of six teachers, but there were many, many teachers honored that morning. I think there were 29. And each teacher, each one of those 29, had a very unique story. And those stories were read at the Chamber breakfast that morning. And it was really wonderful to hear everybody's contributions to our district and their exceptional work ethic and how much they care about students. So, we really appreciate you all coming down here tonight. Your work is just exemplary, and we want to recognize it. So, thank you so much. Okay, so now, we're getting back to business as usual. And we're going to move on to public items, public comment items not on the agenda. And... I have a little blurb I have to read, too, as you know, which is not coming up. Okay. Well, you know, you're all going to speak. If you've turned in a card, you're going to speak about a topic which is not on tonight's agenda, and you're limited to three minutes each. We're going to start with Aaron Rue, followed by Cheryl Closer. Hi, Aaron. Yeah, okay. It's on.
Perfect, thank you. Board members, District Office staff, it's time to make compensation and healthcare for staff a top priority. The time is near, the mission's clear, it's later than we think. SRTA staff cares deeply about students. We're preparing them for their future. Board members, please show that you care by empowering the district to rectify this dire situation. Last year, members of the District Office, SRTA, and CTA worked collaboratively by participating in the Sonoma County Public Healthcare Task Force. The task force recognized the competition with other healthcare providers is required. The district must eliminate Kaiser's current monopoly and seek out other healthcare providers. As a point of reference, this year, every staff member in Santa Rosa City Schools who opts into the district healthcare plan received a $100 to $400 per month reduction in pay due to Kaiser's rising healthcare costs. We can do better than this if we seek other healthcare providers that will provide competition to Kaiser. Members of the district cabinet consistently recognize the fact we have a dire issue attracting and retaining staff. The list of needed staff on EdJoin is extensive. Three specific groups were struggling to hire: school psychologists, nurses, and speech therapists. However, this year, the board approved the use of staffing agencies to attract school psychologists and speech therapists to Santa Rosa City Schools. Each temp agency employee is earning between $100,000 and $145,000. We were able to attract them from distant locations due to these competitive salaries. You empowered the district just over one year ago to increase compensation and provide monetary support for medical benefits. Even with this bump, we continue to scramble for our footing because the cost of living is becoming too steep in Sonoma County. The time is near and the mission's clear. You must empower the district to increase compensation for salary and healthcare. They must make attracting and retaining staff their top priority. Thank you.
Next up is Cheryl Closer, followed by Ginger Matic. Hi, Cheryl.
Hi. Hello, my name's Cheryl Closer, and I'm a district nurse for Santa Rosa City Schools. I'm here tonight sharing with you because I'm very concerned about the health and safety of many of our students. Presently, we do not have enough nurses to meet the needs of our medically fragile students, and we don't even have enough nurses to meet the needs of students. Another concern is the safety of our medically fragile students. There are increasing number of medically fragile students attending our schools. The American Academy of Pediatrics noted that as student health needs become more complex, the school nursing role has expanded to include additional responsibilities. Presently, we do not have enough nurses to safely manage the complex needs of our medically fragile students. Many emergency care plans have not yet been written this school year, so our staff doesn't know what to do. Not all aides have been properly trained in caring for these medically fragile students, and some of our students have not been able to attend school on some days because there's no one there at school to meet those needs. I'm also concerned about medication administration by our secretaries and techs. We do not have enough nurses to properly supervise our unlicensed staff in administering medications to our students. Per state law, there are certain things that have to be done if we're going to give our students medications. We have to document the medications, which is not getting done properly. Sometimes, our staff is giving medications without the parent consent. Sometimes, they've even given medication without current doctor's orders. Sometimes, they're giving wrong medications, they've given wrong doses of medication, and the medication is given at the wrong time. Sometimes...
Could you wrap up, please?
Yes. Sometimes, staff has been accused of stealing students narcotics, so it's really critical we follow these rules. And thank you very much for listening, and I'm just hoping we can work together to really meet our students' needs. Thank you.
Thank you Cheryl. Ginger Madich, followed by Jennifer Rodriguez.
I really want you to hear me tonight, because this issue on nursing is not only important for the students in our district, but it's actually vital for our staffing. Without you hearing this information, we hope you can make the right decision on this. Finally, I'm concerned about having enough nurses to effectively train our teachers and staff so they can assist our students safely as possible. We need to assist staff in managing life-threatening allergies and using EpiPins, caring for students with diabetes, caring for students who have a seizure at school, caring for students with severe heart conditions, bleeding disorders, choking concerns, and many other conditions that may affect their health and ability to learn. Thank you for listening to our concerns. I'm looking forward to working together, the nurses with you and the school board. My name is Ginger Madich, and Leslie Pryor was unable to come tonight, so I'm reading a letter for her. Respected board members, my Leslie is, my name is Leslie Pryor. I have worked at Santa Rosa High School for four years as a health technician. I recently applied for and have accepted a new position at Santa Rosa High School. The reason for my recent move is due to the added pressures, which is, which is the result of the increased workload of the school nurses. Currently, Santa Rosa City Schools has 3.8 nurses for over 16,000 students, not including students who attend the non-public schools, which we probably will get even more in the future. Recently, two of our nurses have been required to be in the classroom as one-on-one nurses, leaving them pulled out of the pool to call on. They are not able to assist. So leaving those days to call on a nurse in case of a question is out of the question. This has made it increasingly difficult and at times unsafe for health technicians. I would like to leave you with an example of the kind of issues that can arise and with, with no registered nurse to call could lead to a serious and potentially deadly situation into the district. At the beginning of September 1st, I had a student drop off their medication they're supposed to take after lunch every day. After counting the number of pills and verifying the prescription information on the bottle with the medication authorization form, I noticed there was a discrepancy. I informed the student that I would not be able to administer the medication, and their parent would have to pick it up. Upon further review, I noticed the dosage on the pill appeared to be different than the dosage on the bottle or medication authorization form. When I looked up the information of the pill, it was completely different medication than what was prescribed to the student. The parent filled the bottle with the wrong medication. May I have three sentences? Thank you. While in this case, the different medication wouldn't have hurt the student, it does present a real and scary situation. I felt I had no nurse to call and could have unknowingly administered the wrong medication to a student. It was at this point I decided that I no longer felt protected by the district or that I could safely assist the students at Santa Rosa High School. Thank you for your time, Leslie Pryor.
Thank you. Next up is Jennifer Rodriguez, followed by Beth Muns.
My name is Jennifer Rodriguez. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us tonight. Hello, my name is Jennifer Rodriguez, and I am a district nurse here at Santa Rosa City Schools. We are currently in a state of nursing crisis, and it is regarding the health and the safety of our students. I am currently in a one-to-one situation which I am dealing with a medically fragile student. What this means is that I am taking care of one medically fragile student at one school all day long. Therefore, I am not able to tend or care for my other four school sites. Additionally, the district nurses are not able to address most of the following. Health requests and concerns from teachers, which we get a lot of. Mandated vision and hearing screenings of students. Mandated IEP and health reports. Screening students with suspected vision and hearing concerns. Covering and traveling to non-public schools for mandated health screenings. Connecting students who lack medical and dental care and vision care with appropriate community resources. Attending mandated individual education plan, IEP meetings. Ensuring that the district is in compliance with state immunization requirements. Intervening with medical and mental health concerns before they become a critical emergency issue. We are not adequately staffed to complete our paradigm medical billing services for the reimbursement that we could be receiving. If we were, this would be a great and excellent way to pay for more nursing positions. These are my health and safety concerns that are not being completely met at this time. Thank you again for listening. Jennifer Rodriguez, Santa Rosa City Schools District Nurse.
Thank you. Beth Muns and Dorothy Patch Kennedy.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Beth Muns. I'm a Santa Rosa City Schools school nurse, and I'm here to present some solutions and some recommendations to address this unsafe situation for students. With our current credentialed school nurse to student ratios, we are unable to safely manage our students' care needs. This is an unsafe situation for students and will continue to be until staffing levels are increased and mandated training guidelines are met for our staff. Furthermore, school nursing is one of the most effective ways to keep children healthy and in school and to prevent chronic absenteeism. One way is as school nurse positions. Provide adequate credentialed school nurse coverage, and according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, what this means is going back to the good old days, where there is one-to-one school nurse for every school. However, I do realize this most likely will not happen in the near future, but I believe we can increase our school nurse positions by posting more positions. Most school nurses in Sonoma County have, on average, 1,500 students per school nurse. Here, we have over 4,000 students per school nurse. Filling positions also, one way to do that is to offer competitive compensation package for our school nurses to recruit and to retain. Be placed on at least the same salary schedule as the speech therapist and psychologist, and offer stipend to school nurses to obtain their school nurse credential and for obtaining their national certification. Offer healthcare benefits. Retain, we can also decrease our student to nurse ratio by adding more school nurse And we also need support from our administrators and human resources in advertising and hiring our school nurses. There is funding that may be available through LCAP and Medi-Cal billing, as Jennifer mentioned earlier. However, I do recognize that we have made improvements over the years at Santa Rosa City Schools, and I think we need to continue to do that. And then some of the things we can continue to do here is to contract with retired nurses to help do our mandated vision and hearing screenings. And also to continue providing licensed vocational nurses from agencies. And provide current CPR and first aid certification to our staff who volunteer to give emergency medications. Ensure volunteer office staff and teachers attend medication administration trainings offered by the district nurses and provide substitute teachers for those that attend the trainings. Thank you for your time, and we are available to discuss meaningful ways in which these health and safety concerns can be addressed.
Thank you. And the last card I have is Dorothy Patch Kennedy.
Do I need to turn this? It's on. Oh, okay. I can be brief. First of all, I want to actually thank the board for, a couple of weeks ago, some of my colleagues spoke before you, and you heard us, and we really appreciate it. We appreciate that renovations to Montgomery classrooms were placed on the priority list for, for the bond projects. We really appreciate that. We also appreciate that you recognized the problem of our excessively large classes and the excessive number of excessively large classes that we have at Montgomery this year, and asked for the district to help us find sections to alleviate some of that pressure on students. And I just want to report to you today that so far, we have not gotten any new sections, including requested sections for dedicated instruction for EL students. And we've been told that we are not going to be getting any new sections. I just wanted to follow up with that report. So thanks again for your support. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, the request from Director Kristoff is, could you, all who spoke, if you have a written text, could you please submit it to Lori so that we have it on the record? The nurses, I'm sorry. Mm-hmm, last speakers.
Your letters, the letters you wrote, anything you write?
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to, oh, there's a written text. Now we'll move on to the Santa Rosa Teachers Association Report. President Ola King-Klay.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent, and School Board Directors, and also students in the audience, teachers, parents, and special loved ones. It's another Wednesday evening that we get to spend together working for the betterment of our students. SRTA is committed in preparing our students for their future in the most positive atmosphere possible. We value professionalism, collaboration, and caring. As an association, we will go over and beyond the call of duty to make sure all of our students receive a top-quality education. With that being said, we're looking forward to working with CNI, or Curriculum and Instruction, to affirm that SRCS has sufficient textbook, textbooks, or instructional materials that is aligned to the academic content standards and consist, coincide with the content and cycle of curriculum framework adopted by the State Board of Education. Truancy, we're pleased to see that the Truancy Intervention Committee has developed a working plan to help parents, students, and the community in dealing with the chronic absenteeism. If we are preparing our students for the career world, we must assist them in practicing the most basic job requirement. Showing up, the elevated academic academy, excuse me, sounds like a positive plan. It will give educators a chance to create new activities for students and a way to help the district earn ADA from students that have been absent. SRTA is looking forward to working out all the details with DO and getting this show on the road. Now for personal shouts. First, the first one goes out to Susan Frye and Mike Adams, both of Biella Elementary School. This shout is because they have worked tirelessly to make their school the best school there is, but most of all, to make their students better than what they were at the start. Second, goes out to an admin, made a big change, went from the high school down to the middle school, but always had taught at the middle school. We have a new admin by the name of Ed Navarro. He is working hard to keep, keep up with the pace at Rincon Valley Middle School. We are on the run, and I'm sure he is counting those steps. Thank you. And last but not least, in front of you have some great words of wisdom that deals with tolerance. Tolerance is one of those things that we all should instill in ourselves, as well as our children, as well as our friends and neighbors. We are all different in different ways, but we should gear to understand, just because someone is different doesn't mean that he or she is not worthy of your consideration. So when you see me on the street or in Nordstrom's, just remember that I'm different, but you need to love me anyway. Thank you very much.
We do love you. We do love you all.
Just in case anyone missed it, Nordstrom Rack is opening on Friday. Next up is California School Employee Association, CSEA, President Tammy Afons. Lori, is that mic on up there? Hi, Tammy.
Good evening, President Jay, Superintendent Kitamura, and School Board members. It's been a while since I've been here. I'm finally back on the road to health, and I appreciate every day that I'm here. CSEA 75 looks forward to continuing updating of our job descriptions during this year. We've been working through and have completed one large group, and we're beginning our next. We are excited about the next Cal-Turn event that we are going to be going to in this next week, and how we can work together with the district and our other units to move forward for the benefits of our students. We want to thank you for all that you do at the beginning of this year, throughout the year, and the end of the year. Just in case someone decides to say something that offends someone, we're going to look forward and know that you've been thanked at least two or three times before that should happen, and know that it's not personal. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to turn it over to the Superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I just have to ask, because there's so many students in the room, and I love it, what class are you coming from? What teacher? Wow, okay, I didn't understand a word any of you said, but it sounds like we have, so... Okay, Horner, okay, who else? No, it's okay, who else? Wow, okay. So I know that you're going to have a wonderful experience here, and that your assignment is going to be so well-done based on everything you learned in here today, so thank you for being here. Okay, I am very, very excited to announce that one of our schools, LC Allen High School, will have their drum line perform at the California School Board Association yearly conference in December in San Francisco. They had to go through a rigorous selection process in order to achieve this accomplishment, and we are very proud of them. We also have, for the California School Board Association, we are a finalist for the Golden Bell Award for our Equity and Social Justice Initiative. So great things there. And lastly, I want to thank all the teachers, administrators, parents, and students for attending the last three weeks of Back to School Night. So we had elementary, then we had middle school, and this last week, we had high school. You all did an excellent and wonderful job showcasing the awesome things you do in your classrooms, and the parents who came out, we greatly, greatly appreciate that because our students are absolutely deserving of the very best. Thank you very much.
There are no board committee reports to be given tonight. We did have a TadCon meeting last week, and I'm working on the minutes with Lori. It was a good discussion, and we'll get back to you with that after, at our next meeting. Next up are their board member reports. We'll start with Ron. No report. Jen? Larry? Bill? Frank? Laura? Little John? Okay, thank you very much. Moving right along, we, oh, CSBA, NSBA report. Director Pugh.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, you know, I've mentioned a couple of times my interest in programming and software and development of the district. Writing code is a very popular course now nationally. Just wanted to let you know, our governor today signed into law the expansion of computer science education. We'll be establishing a 23-person advisory panel in Torkelson's office within the next year. And so the idea is we want to, the state law will be that to integrate programming, computer science through kindergarten through senior in high school. So we have a choice, and I'll ask our superintendent later on to be thinking about a person that we would like to have participate on that committee. We might be able to make that happen. Did I see a volunteer? There we are, okay. I'll work on that. Thank you so much.
So now we're going to move on to our consent items.
Move items E2 through 4 and 6 through 10.
Second.
That was moved by Director Carl, seconded by Director Kristoff. Roll call vote, please. Director Carl? Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Hanell?
Aye.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
Director Gonzalez?
Aye.
President Jay?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
And then I need somebody making a motion on E5.
I wanted to have a discussion on this, if I might. This is an important change for the district, and I'm not sure how familiar the public is with a chief financial officer in a school district, but it is a critical position and a very, very difficult position, I know, to fill. I know that when I'm thinking about what to do in my retirement from the board, I'm thinking about maybe that would be the job for me. So I'm kind of interested in terms of what a chief financial officer does and what the requirements are to become such a person. It seems like the knowledge and the experience are tremendously complex and demanding in order to find, you know, somebody that can do that. So if somebody can tell me what the CFO does and how you get to be one, that would be, that would be a good start on this.
Tonight, you wanted, I'll give you a synopsis of it, because as you say, it is extremely complex. School finances isn't just something that can be done from an accounting standpoint. Accounting is extremely important, but the laws and legislations and regulations about the different funding sources that we have is extremely complex. Coupled with that is just the organization and leadership needed in the area of finances in a school is something that I think is extremely important for an organization to have. So not only the knowledge about the finances and the different legal, and the different funding sources and the way in which we budget, but also the leadership to be able to guide staff in a way that they understand, and the public in a way that they understand the finances. And honestly, I would say, Director Kristoff, to have trust and belief in the numbers that come forward, and confidence that as we move forward in the district, that our finances are being, that we're stewards of the finances and that they're being spent in a way that is judicious and well-thought-out. So the specific skills that go into that, I think are many, I think are many. And this actual contract that's being brought forward, I think, is in response to the fact that our executive director has resigned and won't be leaving as of September 30th. And so because we didn't want to have the district in, without someone with great knowledge to be able to continue the movement forward, this company that you see before you has been highly recommended and used by many districts in an interim basis, on an interim basis.
So this will fill a position that Carolyn is doing right now, and this is a one-year contract, is that correct?
It's not even that, because if we, when we have opened the position, and when we find the appropriate candidate, then those services would end with the Ryland Company.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, so it's really an interim solution until we find a permanent person to take the position. But just like the nurses, the shortage of nurses, the shortage of chief executive directors or CBOs, it's great.
Yeah.
It's huge, so I don't have any kind of an idea when, how long it will take.
Okay, thank you very much. I move item E5.4.
It's all of, it's E5.
Yeah, we need a motion for the entire E, because if we didn't pull just E4 or E5.4, we pulled all of E5, so. So I think the motion is for all of E5.
All of E5, yeah.
That was what the second was, too. Good.
So that motion was by Director Kristoff, seconded by Director Carl. Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Hanell?
Aye.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
Director Gonzalez?
Aye.
President Jay?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move on to our discussion action items. F1 is a discussion item, update on truancy intervention prevention committee.
You know what works good is this, I just noticed it.
Thank you, okay.
Most times, it doesn't jump around.
President Jay, Board Member Superintendent Kitamura, we're here today with our team to present both an update and kind of some new information on the status of our truancy intervention committee, and where we are making progress and how we're moving ahead. With me tonight, we'll be presenting with Patty Turner, Director from CNI, Mary Ann Ayala, Director from SAFE, and Lisa Valente from the Keeping Kids in School program. Mary Ann will discuss currently the intervention committee that we have and go through that program, and we'll talk about those strategies of what we've been working on in the other slides. Ms. Ayala.
Okay, thank you. The District Truancy Intervention Prevention Committee, just a little bit of the history of how it was formed. It started spring of last year. We put together three focus groups, one for elementary, middle, and high school, which included classified, certificated, community members, administrators, and parents. We have a vacancy, and we are very confident that we'll be able to fill it, as this is a very high-interest issue. A focus of LCAP Goal 2 is the chronic absentee. And that definition, just as a review, is a student that has missed 10% of the school year, 18 school days, excused or unexcused.
What's beginning to happen in this, this intervention committee was focusing on truancies, but what became apparent and what some of the legislation and national movement has been, it's, truancy is one portion of it, but chronic absenteeism is the bigger picture. And so there's a couple of links there to reports that we've already referred to you all about. State Attorney General report did one for absenteeism and a federal report. And so what this committee is going to also begin to work on is just, not just truencies, but chronic absenteeism, and there's some new work in that area. So the, basically, the intervention committee is moving to pick up chronic absenteeism in addition to just truencies.
Current interventions are both school-based and community partners. One addition this year is the Seoul Counselor, which is supporting our, specifically supporting our language learners.
And our community partners, we have one of them here today, Keeping Kids from School. So one of the, one of the organizations we're working with on that focus is Keeping Kids in School with Lisa Valente, and I'll turn a couple of things to her.
Okay, thank you. So just to remind you and remind everyone, Keeping Kids in School is a federally funded program that's run by the Sonoma County Probation Department. It's actually, it's a prevention program, so the ultimate goal is to improve school outcomes by reducing absenteeism and ultimately reducing the likelihood that students enter the juvenile justice system. Probation has partnered with Seneca Family of Agencies, provided technical assistance and high-quality case management services to our partner schools. We use a research-based needs assessment, and our case managers work collaboratively with school staff and the student attendance teams to tailor interventions to the needs of each student and family in the program. Santa Rosa City Schools, we're in nine school districts, and in Santa Rosa City Schools, we have three case managers in Santa Rosa City Schools. Last year, we served four schools and programs, so we served Biella, Steel Lane, Grayson, Midrose. I'm going to share some basic kind of service data in a few minutes, but just a quick note that we're, did you talk about how we're in talks this week?
No, I kind of, the slide went by a little too fast. Just to reiterate what Lisa's referring to, is that Biella Elementary School and Steel Lane, we saw an increase in attendance, and the Grayson Midroad program didn't work as well as we had hoped, so we are in discussion about a new focus on middle school.
And utilizing, using, taking into account the research, what the research tells us about early intervention in terms of, in chronic absenteeism. So this next slide, thank you, will show you how Keeping Kids in School kind of fits into your broader school structures. The idea when we developed Keeping Kids in School was that it did not, we didn't want it to be separate from the schools at all, and so we worked really hard to embed our case managers within the schools. And they learn, not only do we train them on this system, but we train them on getting to know their school and fitting their style and their interventions to fit the needs of the school culture, because what we're learning is that each school has different kinds of resources, different people, different staffing levels, different expectations for different positions, and so we really tailor them to the individual school. So if you know like a PBIS or MTSS or anything like that, this is, a healthy attendance management system, it's just a three-tiered system of support. So you have your universal interventions at tier one. Tier two are those early outreach interventions that you provide to students who are not, who are continuing to miss school despite the structures and the things that you have in place. And then tier three is for those students who are most at need and who are not responding to any intervention, and that's where you really provide case management services. So the way that Keeping Kids in School fits in is at the top of tier two and into tier three, and then also providing technical assistance to the schools that they serve to more fully develop their three tiers of intervention. So last year, when I ran this data, we served about, I think, 70 kids from Santa Rosa City Schools with case management services. This slide just shows you the different kinds of interventions that we provided to students. We keep, we collect a whole bunch of data from this program, but I thought that it was interesting to see, out of the 400-some interventions that we documented, the two highest categories where we provided intervention were what we called school-based intervention and home-based services. And then you can see the other kinds of interventions that we provided. Also, our case managers, again, you have three, provided, or had over 3,000 contacts with their students, whether it was home visits, attending IEP meetings, meeting with teachers regarding students, and so that's... Okay, so, oh, one of my slides.
The committee met early this year, and we met to go over the recommendations that we presented last year. And the first six recommendations, we will be rolling out this year. This is like a timeline. We have customized attorney letters, district attorney letters, that we're hoping will go out by the end of the semester. Attendance Information Fact Sheets went out to all schools. All families received one, either through Back to School Night, emailed out to families. Every site had a little maybe different or similar method to get that information out to families. We are working on a district watch list. We will have a chronic absenteeism letter that will be sent out to parents as students approach that 18-day of chronic absenteeism. And it's going to be positive, like an awareness letter, just to really focus in on that and help kids, help parents understand the importance of getting kids to school every day. We are working on a public relations campaign with our communication coordinator in the district. And also, we have Saturday Attendance School, which begins in October, and we're really excited about that. The next five recommendations that we reviewed should roll out over the next two years. We definitely need to... out over the next two years. We definitely need to investigate the fiscal impact of those items. Another peek at this school year with the public relations campaign, the district put together a 30-second attendance video that was very well-received and shown at back-to-school night at all levels, and also our, again, our Elevate Academy, which will begin in October.
I just want to mention how excited I am about being in charge of the Elevate Academy. We are all embracing it with enthusiasm, and I don't know if you remember, we did present about a year and a half the program, and we were all excited then, so it has come back to us, yes. In a very positive way, thank you very much. We're working closely with Ed Link, Mr. Chris Goki, and we are going to begin October 15th, so that is the first day of implementation. We're looking at doing it for one session per month, and we started with a schedule of 13 sites, but it may change as the year goes through. Not all 13 sites will start in October, we're not already. It may be two or three. I know two of the high schools are ready, so I want to celebrate them. Those are the hours that you see above, for four hours with a 15-minute nutrition break, and then we're looking to recruit 100 students per site with a ratio of 25 to 1. So it can be in one-hour periods for the elementary, four blocks, or for the secondary, we're looking at two two-hour blocks. Otherwise, we're looking for this year's ADA to be recovered in a year from now, and then in two years to be in the green, to be able to utilize that funding source.
So our next steps, the committee is going to continue to meet, you saw those guidelines and items that they're working on for this year, 16, 17. We have a lot of work to do to fine-tune some of our data and make sure our information is getting accurate and quickly out to school sites, so they can put interventions in early. So we're working with IT to make sure that's accessible and easy for school sites to work with. And then we'll be bringing some recommendations for, as you saw, for next year, fiscally costing those out and making sure that any recommendations will kind of meet the needs of where we are fiscally. And overall, some questions that committee and we're wondering and making sure we want to keep for consideration is, how will the new student information system provide the data necessary to monitor attendance and drive actions? So we know that's an important part of our transition to the illuminate data system. Another one is, how do we create the urgency around reducing chronic absenteeism and the loss of teaching and learning time for students? And that's focused around our public campaign, getting the word out and getting some early intervention strategies in. So with that, we'll take any questions from the board.
Superintendent Kitamura will start.
Yeah, I would like to reiterate, because I think it was included in some of the original writing of this, that credit recovery was in the report. That is not what Elevate Academy will be focusing on. It will be focused on ADA recovery, instructional support, tutoring, those kinds of things, as well as enrichment. And so I wanted to make that clear, that this is not, this Elevate Academy is not for credit recovery, so.
Larry?
I just want a little more, Patty, on the Elevate Academy. This is one, one day, what is it, one day a month, you said?
Yeah, we're beginning this year with one day a month.
And so this is like, one being a whole fiscal, one hour being fiscal activity, the other being normal subject hours, is, tell me what that means.
So we assigned one Saturday out of each month.
Oh, Saturday, got it.
For the end of the school year, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Laura?
Thank you for the report. My question is, how is, is there a way to incorporate any of this in with our restorative resources? For instance, my understanding is that, and I can't remember the trainer's name that we have a contract with, but that he's doing circles and so forth in elementary schools and our schools, isn't, wouldn't that be a good place to talk about mindfulness and meditation, things like that? Because a report has recently come to my attention, out of San Francisco, actually, that a school in Visitation Valley, if you're familiar with San Francisco, it's kind of the area that borders Daly City around the Cow Palace, has lots of crime and so forth. They started a program of mindfulness meditation, and they cut their truancy rate in half, down to 7%. The state average is 30%. And since we're already doing this and we have a, we've hired this gentleman, who's, again, I can't remember his name, and I, my understanding is that we were going to be doing circles and things like that, so couldn't this be incorporated? And I don't know if I missed it, but did you tell us what our absenteeism rate is or truancy rate is?
We did not have that in this presentation. Are you looking for last year's or currently?
Either way.
Let's try to, we're waiting for the third, for the end of September to get an accurate number. We just began to send out truancy letters, so we'll get better information, so Superintendent Kitamura can put it in our notes, so we can have that accurate information. And back to your other question, it is going to be very interesting, now that Cook, as an example, is doing the school-wide mindfulness. So I think that'll be a great way to us compare a year ago and this first, first month of school, and look at a number of things, truancy or absenteeism being one of them. So there will be a number of things that we hope to get out of mindfulness to give us some good data to have us roll forward. And then on the issue of our restorative specialists, that is an example of something they do at a tier two. Once we identify students at a, say, a SART meeting or just an attendance concern, they have those lists of students, and they've been doing that, so that is a practice that we're doing at, I think, at all levels, elementary, middle, and high.
But you said that's a level two, right?
Yes.
Because my, I was more focusing on just in general, if teachers are doing circles and they're doing this training, that mindfulness meditation could be something that's incorporated into that perhaps?
I know it is at Cook, and whether or not that's expansive. I mean, they're doing those circles, they're doing those mindfulness practices every day, twice a day, and that's happening. It takes a lot of training. The restorative specialists have had little bits of that training, so they can kind of do some pieces of that, but it hasn't been rolled out school-wide to level one yet.
Diane?
Yes, so the Cook model was really three years in the making, so it was two years of training with this third year being it rolled out. And as a matter of fact, Visitation in San Francisco was where they went to receive the first look at how this could work at their school district, so I wanted to show that.
Jen?
Thank you for your report and your work on this, it's important. I actually have been reading about the mindfulness a lot too, and I know that we're starting to incorporate that, which I think is great. And I think that there are a lot of teachers who are sort of unofficially using it in their classrooms, and I think it would be interesting to reach out to them and find out what kind of success they're having and, you know, use their experience. The other thing that I think there's cool research around, because it's very simple, is text messaging and using text messages, both automated and direct, to work with truancy. And so I don't know if that's part of our program, I'd be interested to know if we've considered that and whether that's a possibility.
I can tell you that the schools that we work with, we, our case managers all have cell phones and they text. Now, this is not like, you're, maybe you're referring to automated text messages that go home, and I can't speak to that, but what I can speak to is the way that our case managers are communicating with families is, they text back and forth to parents, they text back and forth to students, they, and it's, it's been really effective and powerful and really interesting to see how more engaged a student is with their case manager when they're able to text them.
That's great. I know that, yeah, both, I think the direct text messages probably has the best, you know, has the best result, but all, there's a lot of good opportunity for that. I think it's just a lot easier for someone to sort of answer the phone if they get to just text, rather than pick up the phone and get scolded for not having their kid there. Anyway, great work, thank you.
No other questions or comments? Barry?
Yeah, I would love to see an elementary site take a pilot mindfulness, or maybe certain grade levels across so many elementary sites. And I've read a lot about it, and I think it's, and I see a lot of shaking heads, there's a lot of positive things coming out of that.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you for a good report. Appreciate it. Next up is F2, a discussion item on the S-Back testing. F5.
Excuse me. Good evening, President Jay, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Kitamura. Tonight, we're here to discuss the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress, commonly referred to as CASP, and associated with the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, S-Back, which has been a four-letter acronym that we've heard many times over the last couple of years, not only as we prepared to take those computer-based tests three years ago, but as we've actually gone through two significant rounds of testing. And I'll do a plug for the BOND program and the technology, with the infusion of that technology into all of our campuses, the ability to take these tests without interruption has been a huge advantage for all of our school sites. So that investment's paying off in many ways, beyond just classroom instruction, but also with the assessments that we have to perform online. As you know, 2016, the spring of 2016, was our second year of scored assessment testing or assessments, focusing on ELA and mathematics in grades three through eight and 11. We're going to present our results from those tests from 2016, and I just want to make note that during the presentation, we'll be handing out some additional data points for the S-Back testing results. As this is a work in progress, as we're trying to get as much easily available data as possible to post, not only to our website, but to share with the board as well. At subsequent meetings, we'll be providing information items on further analysis of results of how our schools and our students are performing. Tonight, Rand Van Dyke, Director of Data Testing and Assessment, will go through those results, and Dr. Guzman will talk about what we're doing with the California standards through all of our schools. So with that, I'll hand it to Rand.
Thank you, Rick. So a little bit of background, as you're familiar with STAR testing, they had bands of achievement, they've done the same thing with the Smarter Balance testing or the CASP testing. So they've broken it up into four different levels, standard not met, standard met, standard nearly met, standard met, and exceeded standard. In this particular graphic, to be clear, the range, they've completely changed the range, the STAR range were much smaller numbers, and I think part of the reason the numbers are big here, so people don't try and compare the two, because they're completely different tests. And the endpoints on the range at the bottom are approximations, because they're a little bit different for English Language Arts than they are for the mathematics. In the next slide, what we have is stacked bar charts representing how our students did in the elementary district, grades three through six. And the reason we have a seventh and eighth grade is two of our elementary district schools, charter schools, have had seventh and eighth graders last year. So those are fairly small sample size. In addition to this stacked chart, what you have is a quick and easy visual representation. The dark blue and the next lighter colored blue are the two lower bands, represented the standard not met and the standard nearly met. And then the lighter colors are the standard met and the standard exceeded. So you have a quick visual representation of how our students performed in relative terms. The next two sections of this chart, you have raw numbers of students who performed at the various levels, including the total number of students who took the test, and the mean scale score, which is when you toss everybody together for that grade level, their, essentially their average score was the particular number you see in front of you. And then this website also creates the percentage, so you have a couple of different ways of looking at that information. The layout is the same for the English Language Arts at elementary, as for math, as for secondary, and secondary math as well. So this is just, again, a visual representation of the elementary district math scores. And to point out the difference, at the secondary level, you'll notice we have fifth and sixth grade, because one of our charter schools lies within the high school district, so its results are reported in the state reporting through the high school district, and their scores are represented along with the rest of the students in the district. So again, it's the same format for that information. And that's what math looks like. The next couple of slides is a different kind of visual representation. What we've done in this particular slide is we've given a size space in terms of the bands for standard not met, nearly met, met, and exceeded. Slightly different color coding to make it a little bit easier to see, and this is also year over year. So what you're looking at in this slide is elementary results for English Language Arts. The grade three, the large red range is the standard not met, and then the blue dashed line represents the mean scale scores from the previous school year, 2015, and the black dashed line is the mean scale scores from 2016. So this gives you a different way of visually looking at it and a comparison between the two, the two years. And we have us, and that's the packet that we handed out, is actually the representation for both elementary and high school in English and math. And this is a representation of the secondary results for ELA. Again, keeping in mind that grades five and six look a little odd in this particular chart, partly because they're, partly because they're a small sample size and, you know, the particular school they're at. The other thing, as I'm looking at this chart to try and remove the confusion, that those gray areas should be white. Apparently, I missed that, and I apologize for that. As Rick said, we are going to be continuing to compile this information into formats that are easy to digest and see visually. We're going to continue working on that, and we have, we will have that ready at a soon, soon board meeting for an informational item for you. And now, I turn it over to Dr. Guzman.
Good evening. As you can see, we are utilizing lots of ways to implement the California state standards. We are midstream in the implementation, and you can see here the list of ways in which we are making sure that we're adhering to the California standards in both elementary and secondary. Can you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. And some of these will be coming back to the board with specific examples from teachers of how they're doing. I believe we have a collaborative curriculum design, and also some of our math pilot information will be coming your way, so you can have that information in front of you. As you know, through our LCAP allocations, we have provided and allocated resources towards professional development, because as we know that teachers are our greatest asset, we want to provide them with a professional development to be able to adhere to the California standards. Attached in your packet is the new rubric that was just agreed upon by the state, and we'll be coming back next board meeting to address the LCAP timeline and also the new rubrics, which really is the new measurement of how we're implementing the LCAP here in our district. So I look forward to having that conversation soon.
Questions or comments from the board? Laura?
Thank you for your report. I have a question. Is there a way, when students are taking the S-Back, is there a way that, since it's on computer, can it be monitored how quickly they finish testing? So for instance, I administered this S-Back last year for the first time, other teachers had usually done it, and I had students who finished very, very quickly. So I'm just wondering, is there a way to monitor that, since it is done on a computer?
Haven't been asked that question previously, so I'd have to look into it. It is an untimed test, so it's, there's not a, you know, you have to be finished a certain amount of, in a certain period of time. I do know there are some metrics that we can look at on the backside, so I will look into that.
Because one of my concerns always when it comes to testing is how many students actually are, you know, trying, right? And so, like I said, I witnessed firsthand students finishing like that, and just curious. Thank you.
Anyone else? Frank?
Thank you. Excellent report, great graphics, and a peek into the future, quite nice. But I would, this is our third cycle through this process, and I would like to suggest that perhaps for the next report that comes to us next year, whenever, that we could take a look at where we were, where we are, and predict where we want to be. I think it'd be really helpful as I think it'd be really helpful as a board discussion and certainly one with cabinet and staff, along with teachers, about is our instruction and the services we provide positively impacting the number before us? Hard to tell. But if we could take a look what we did over the last few years, we could get a trend. Are we moving in the right direction? And so perhaps in the future documents, we could perhaps see a little bit of that. And then also, the key point of where do you want to be? And then that tells you how you're going to use your resources. Thank you for a great report.
Thank you, Frank.
Ron.
Yeah, thank you guys very much. My question is, you know, I kind of look at this as still being in the experimental stage, and it doesn't look good. I mean, there are some people who'll pick up on this and go, "Man, look at the people that aren't making the standards here. What are you guys doing wrong?" Or "What are you doing right?" And we had this before in the form of, you know, No Child Left Behind, where it was just, it was a lose-lose situation. I don't look at that as such, but the state is making adjustments now. I mean, it's not like all of a sudden, we're going to come in with this new testing system that is critically, you know, thinking base supposedly, and have kids buy into this thing and then really, you know, really show improvement over a short period of time. Now, are we going to be seeing adjustments at the state level, do you think? I'm just wondering how this is all, because it seems like we're moving, but the sand's kind of moving under our feet, too. Am I incorrect in that assessment?
Well, I would say that the analogy that we hear is that we're flying the plane as we're building the plane. There is some opposing viewpoints, I guess you could say, around the accountability system and how it's going to merge with the ESSA, the national, what was the no, or what is the no child left behind. I think we have to remember at Santa Rosa City Schools District that we've really only implemented the Common Core up to the second, third grade. If you think about kindergarteners who started, we're really only at first, you know, second, third grade-ish. And so, we need to be patient. And I think that we also need to understand that if we are along the way having benchmarks and formative assessments, multiple measures, that the test scores will naturally come. That's what I say to whoever I'm speaking to, that if we're building strong curriculum and have great first instruction and the interventions and support that go along with that, and we're looking at our formative, going along the way and looking at formative assessments and looking at different things, student work, benchmarks, all of that, the test scores will come. So I think we have to look at all different aspects of it and not be driven just by the test scores. It's an indicator. It's a way to look at trajectory, like Director Poop, he was talking about. But I think we have to look at it. I don't want us to fall into the no child left behind trap. Okay? That's...
Jen.
Thank you for the report. So a couple of things. I went on Data Quest to kind of look at state and county numbers in other districts. And one thing that would help me when we look at this is that even though I know that our, that Santa Rosa Accelerated Charter is in our high school district, they are fifth and sixth graders. And so when we churn out, I know these charts in the PowerPoint came directly from the website. But when we create our own numbers like this, I think it'd be helpful to include those fifth and sixth graders with our elementary students. I think that gives us a better comparison, just a suggestion or request. The other thing is that, you know, this is a totally new way of testing. And even though I know we're using technology more in our classrooms, it's not so much that this test really corresponds well to what kids do every day in the classroom. It's a totally different experience. And so I'm wondering if it would be valuable to do some kind of, kind of, post-test interviews and, you know, and really talk to kids about what is their experience with the test and, you know, what's their comfort level and are there things that they're struggling with just with the testing procedure? And are there ways that we could help them with that? Because I suspect, I don't know if this is true, but I would suspect that districts with more money, who have had more technology in the classroom for longer, are making this shift easier, that their kids are doing better. I don't know if that's true, but I think that'd be interesting. Thanks.
Okay. I think that's it for questions. Thank you very much. Good report. I'm going to turn it over to Larry right now. I'm having a few technical difficulties, and I need to figure it out. So Larry, F3.
Okay, we'll start with F3. Professional Development Update.
Just getting the PowerPoint up. Good evening, President J., Superintendent Kidomora, members of the board. Tonight, we're going to give you a Professional Development Update. You have seen these LCAP commitments before. Most of them are the same. However, as they talked about tonight, we are moving with our cohorts in best class. And also, we do have the additional sole counselors, which are really targeting for our long-term English learners. I will say this, that they came up with that name themselves, and I think it's really a beautiful name that they decided to call themselves. We did have our Innovation, Articulation, and Technology Days in August, 11th and 12th. It was very exciting because we not only had Google Apps, but we also had Illuminate Education, which is from our new SIS system. And we're able to see how this new system will work and be able to provide us different types of data. You can see the attendance for both days and also just how many trainers from EdTech and also from Illuminate Education were able to provide professional development that day. It was pretty exciting. And also, we can't forget our keynote, Fred LaGiovarti, I think is how you say his last name, which his, when we see the survey results, which you have in your packet, I think he was very well received, as was, I believe, our superintendent that day in her fabulous costume. Did I skip something? So as we move forward with our third Professional Development Date, which is coming up here in March 17th, you can see these are some of the ideas that are being floated. And over the last three years, as we have had sort of collaboration time together as a whole district, I think it's now time to start turning that over to sites and really being able to utilize that sort of base that we have built as a district and really bring to sites that idea of true collaboration, being able to move forward, as we talked about previously, with some of the professional development opportunities and really diving deep into curriculum. And now, I'm actually going to turn it over to Rick, and hopefully, this is going to work. We're going to show you some of the learning that took place at IAT.
Yes, I can. Can you guys hear me?
We can. So this is a great opportunity for us. We are demonstrating some of the tools that were taught and learned at IAT using Google and the ability to do remote conferencing and video conferencing. Tonight, we're fortunate to have Sergio Villegas, Director of Professional Learning for the EdTech team, join us via Google Hangout from the Dallas-Fort Worth Airport on an extended layover on his way back home. We thought this, like I said, this would be a great opportunity to demonstrate some of the tools that are now becoming available to our classrooms throughout the district that lead to student learning as well as teacher collaboration between sites. And I've asked Sergio just to say a few words about the experience at IAT from the EdTech team perspective. So we'll let you take it away, Sergio.
Hey, thanks for letting me join you all. I just want to say it was a pleasure getting to work with the district. Originally, before I worked for the EdTech team, I worked at Napa County Office of Education. And just collaborating with people in the area, I've seen your guys' growth from afar, your progression into where you got today. And so it was awesome to be there when you guys made this big push to support your teachers. I recently moved to Often Texas and have my job now with EdTech team. EdTech team is an organization that's one of six PD providers for Google for Education. So they're kind of six schools that have kind of received the blessing of Google to use their, you know, their brand in doing our work and represent that. But we are by far, in a way, the largest. We work worldwide in the United States, Canada, Mexico, Brazil, Asia, Europe, and so forth. And I am in charge of events like yours in the U.S. I wanted to, I was excited to get invited in because I wanted to share, in addition to just the positive feedback that everyone got to event, there were some very specific points of feedback that I wanted to share with you all. This event, for 900 teachers, was pretty much put together in about six weeks, and we couldn't have done it without the help of Rick and his team. The feedback didn't just include, "We liked your presenters, the sessions were good, we learned a lot." I heard feedback, it was very unique to this event, now remember, I do this nationwide. I heard things like, the superintendent coming out in her costume, like, really set everybody to kind of kick off the event. The keynote speaker that you guys brought in was so well-received. You guys had childcare for some of your teachers, I've never seen that before. Inviting subs to attend was awesome, that was so cool. Again, that's something that was unique to your event. One thing that Rick and Adrian came in and said is, "We don't want just hour sessions, we want longer opportunities for deeper learning." So they were two-hour sessions. And we did actually five events, over 3,000 teachers that we worked with in that first week of August, so launch events like yours, all over the country. And Santa Rosa was the only school district that was able to actually get all of their teachers to sign up for their schedules. Everyone else just had an excuse. "It's the summertime, we'll never be able to get ahold of them." But with the outreach that you've had to your teachers, I was able to change the schedule. "Oh, this is getting a lot of attention, let's cut something out and double up on it, so we have more opportunities for teachers to do this." And all of this positive stuff that I'm sharing, I guess I just kind of want to finish because if it's like other board meetings I've attended, you know, we want to move quickly. I'm going to finish by saying that when we relaunch our website, we do an annual update every year, the Custom Summit PD page, the event at Santa Rosa will be one of two featured events that will be kind of on display. They can look at the schedule as a sample schedule, look at the feedback as sample feedback, and all the processes and things that we put together. It's going to, is very much our flagship event. We're very proud of it, and we couldn't have done it without you. So thank you for working with us, and I'm happy to come and talk to anybody and work with you guys anytime. It was just an awesome experience.
Thank you, Sergio.
Yep. Are we all good, mate? I'm going to go catch his plane.
Is there a quick question for Sergio, or should we let him?
Anybody, let's do some questions, and I got to run.
Great. Thanks, Sergio. Talk soon.
All right, everybody. Have a good one. Thank you very much.
Bye. Jason. That was, that was really an amazing commentary there, and I'm just really proud of all of you and all the teachers and the dedication that was clearly present during that training. Can I say something? How much do you all pay him to do that? Sure.
I have to take this opportunity to congratulate one of our teachers who has just become a certified Google trainer. We also have many in the wings almost ready to be certified. So what that means is, what Sergio was talking about, the trainers that came to our school to teach, our district to teach us, we now have a certified trainer that can, is able to do that. And that's Linda Constanzas at Slater Middle School. So, yay! And we have, I'm telling you, we have probably six in the wings, like, ready to be certified, which means, within our district, we're going to be able to provide our own EdTech internally and keep growing that. So I wanted to share that.
So with, as we do with most board reports, we leave you with some questions, and I turn it back over to the board. Any comments, questions?
Thank you.
Thumbs up. Great report. Oh, I'm sorry. Jen. I did, but then you weren't quick enough.
Really quick, great report. Sounds like it was a great event or a couple days of events. I would really love a board report that answers question number one.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Appreciate it. So now, we have our first action item of the evening. F4, approval of textbooks.
Yes, I'm asking the board for the approval of The American Journey: A History of the United States.
Move approval.
Second. Moved by Director Carl, seconded by Director Gonzalez, I think. Roll call vote, please.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Gonzalez?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Hanlon?
Aye.
Director Pugh?
Abstain.
President J?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we move on to public hearing regarding sufficiency of textbooks or instructional materials for the 2016-17 school year, grade 7-12. Is anybody here to speak to that item? Mr. Carter Posse. That's right, I have your card here.
Good evening. John Carter Posse, Santa Rosa High. As you know, I've felt compelled many times in the past years to address this board. Many times, it's because I feel that the interest of the students have not been taken to heart, or quite possibly, that the school board hasn't had all the information to make informed decisions. Common themes that I've brought up to you repeatedly is that actions create trust and that actions speak louder than words. I'm here to address you again for those same reasons. Our district likes to tout the word equity when it suits its needs. It likes to push its new motto, "Every student, every day, no matter what." For me, those are empty words when it comes to two-thirds of the students at Santa Rosa High School in its junior class. Even though the district office knew last October we would be short textbooks, and I don't mean a few, I'm talking 100 to 200 textbooks, nothing was done. I addressed this, excuse me, this board was addressed in January and February of last year regarding that same issue. Nothing was done. There were no actions taken. Why? That's not for me to answer. I'll remind you, actions speak louder than words. On the first day of the school year in August, I filed a Williams Act complaint on behalf of the students at Santa Rosa High School to force this district to comply with that law. The first action I got from the district office was to inform me that they had 30 days to solve the issue. That's 30 days with students without textbooks to take home. The next action that was taken, books were ordered, some of which can't be used. Others, you just had to approve in the last board item agenda so they could be distributed, so you could meet the deadline, so you don't have to file a Williams Act complaint. We're seven weeks into the school year. The first quarter ends in two weeks, and two-thirds of the students, the juniors at Santa Rosa High School, still, right now, do not have a textbook to take home. The district office and this board has complied with the wording of the Williams Act, but it has failed to comply with the intent of the act. This could have been avoided. This should have been avoided. I'm here to remind you, actions speak louder than words. I'm also here to remind you and stand here to let you know, I fight and act on behalf of my students, and I will continue to do that, no matter what. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? I'm going to close the public hearing, move on to F6 as an action item, sufficiency of textbooks or instructional materials for 16-17, grade 7-12. Director Pugh?
I'll move the item.
Have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Moved by Director Pugh, seconded by Director Carl. Roll call vote, please.
Director Pugh?
Aye.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Hanlon?
Aye.
Director Gonzalez?
Aye.
President J?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
Okay, now we move on to F7, another public hearing regarding sufficiency of textbooks, and this is for case six. Open up the, open up for speakers. Wait a minute, this is F7. Right. So it's public hearing. Anybody here to speak to F7? So we'll close public hearing, move to F8, which is an action item, but have a motion?
I have a question, if I may.
Sure.
Diane, would it be possible, you know, we as a board do this every year.
Wait a minute, this is F7. Right. So it's public hearing. Anybody here to speak to F7? So we'll close public hearing, move to F8, which is an action item. Do I have a motion?
I have a question, if I may.
Sure.
Diane, would it be possible, you know, we as a board do this every year, functionally, we just have to rely on the fact that, you know, everybody seems like it's, everything's okay. But it would be kind of interesting to have a real discussion on what sufficiency of textbooks really means, and how that's viewed by, you know, a variety of people, teachers and staff, and what our requirements are and so on, too, because I feel like we're doing this, and I have a pretty good feel for it, because I taught for many years, but I think there is some complexity in it, and it would be good for us as board members, maybe to get a better feel for it, and understand maybe how curriculum, you know, this works and so on, and also bring teachers and our curriculum people into it, and really kind of get it out in the open, have a good discussion.
I think that the District Instructional Materials Committee would be a great opportunity to do that. They just had their first meeting, and then as they get a little farther along in the process, or when they begin to start, beginning to bring things forward, let's add that to that discussion around sufficiency, and what that means, and what it means at a time when there really are no Common Core standard-aligned textbooks available. So in what we do in that, and because this district has been, it's taken so long for this district, no, let me take that, it's been so long since this district has had any new adoptions, any new textbooks. So I think it's very complex, and I think you're right. Let's get it out in the open, let's talk about the situation and the challenges that we face with a limited amount of resources, and needing to supply so many new instructional materials for so many departments. And that includes our visual and performing arts, let's say, and the instruments that are needed, physical education as well, what do they need, along with our core subjects. So I think that's a good point, and we will bring that forward when we bring for the district committee, Instructional Materials Committee.
I'm moving F8.
I'm sorry?
I'm moving F8.
Second.
So it's moved by Director Kristoff, seconded by Director Carl. Roll call vote, please.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Hanlon?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Gonzalez?
Aye.
President Jay?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
Okay, now move on to F9, a discussion item, the first reading of board policy and administrative regulation, inter-district agreements.
President Jay, board members, Superintendent Kitamura, this is the second half of changes and provisions to the inter-district agreements that we discussed and began back in June and May of last year. This is a first reading that aligns our program based on CSBA recommendations, but also matches what we changed last sessions to the open enrollment window. It adds clear revocation acceptable standards for grades, behavior, and attendance, which were not necessarily clear, for inter-district transfers, those again are transfers from families that are outside the Santa Rosa City School District. It matches our window to our open enrollment, we've already agreed upon, and it just brings those issues in line and in sync, and this is first reading.
Bill?
Thank you. Couple of things. First, on the board policy, first paragraph, second sentence, I'm needing some help here, it says, "The board may enter into an agreement with any other school district for a term not to exceed five school years for the inter-district attendance of students or residents of the district." I assume that's students who are residents of those districts, or of the other districts?
It's ours as well to go out to other districts, too.
Okay. All right. But I think we need to, for the, for the inter-district attendance of students who are residents of the districts? I mean, I can't read that without some other word in there, and I don't know what it is.
Okay.
I mean, it just reads, "For the inter-district attendance of students or residents of the districts."
Who are residents.
So I don't know what that is, but clean it up.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Second issue. On the AR, we have capacity for inter-district transfer purposes, so if one of schools enrollment that's at the relevant grade level reaches 80%, or when that school's total enrollment reaches 80%, and my understanding is what we're trying to do is cover people that come during the summer, and other changes that can occur. Is that a standard number that we've used in the past, or is it a standard number that the, that the other school districts use? I'm trying to understand where that comes from.
The language, you know, capacity has been vague, and it's allowable by law that you, you don't, if you are at capacity for a program, you can say the school is closed for capacity.
Right.
So what we're doing is allowing ourselves that number. There's been litigation on it, which puts it about 80%. So, you know, in a special ed class, 12 kids out of 15, you can close the class, it doesn't have to be per se at, at capacity. And so we're just putting some definition to that, so we can make it more defensible. We, if we have a challenge to that, and County Office of Education will do those challenges, and if we have a challenge, we show the data, say we are at capacity as defined by our board policy.
That's fine. What I, I was just looking for, where does the number come from, and does it have meaning? And I think you've just explained that it does. The last item is on, it's kind of hard to read these, it's under basis for revocation or termination, and it's on the second to last page. This is where you get a permit revoked by the superintendent, and then an appeal has to be submitted and received in the district office on or before the fifth calendar day following the notice of revocation, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and days when it's closed. Seems quick to me. I don't know how often this happens, and I, again, I don't know whether this is a defensible number, or whether there's some basis in previous litigation, not in our district, but elsewhere, that gives us some comfort that that's a reasonable number.
The clarity is, you have to, if you are replicating, you have, revoking, excuse me, you have to give them some notice of appeal.
Sure, clearly.
And so the original, there's no statute that says it has to be 10, 10 school days, 10 calendar days, five days. In this instance, we thought a quick turnaround was better, because the school, the child has been revoked from school, we'd want to get that resolved as quickly as possible. And so, you know, you're revoking it, and then you're challenging it within a very quick timeline. If it's, if it's approved, they're back in school, and goes from there. So we thought the turnaround was be necessary for the students' best interest and everyone.
Good. Answered my questions. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, this is a discussion item, so you're going to be coming back to us, okay? Great. Now we're on to F10, approval of a resolution recognizing October 2016 as Filipino-American History Month.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Director Carl, seconded by Director Kristoff. Roll call vote, please.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Hanlon?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Gonzalez?
Aye.
President Jay?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, we'll go to F11, another action item, approval of a resolution recognizing October 9 through 15, 2016, as week of the school administrator.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Director Carl, seconded by Director Hanlon. Roll call vote, please.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Hanlon?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Close?
Aye.
Director Pew?
Aye.
Director Gonzalez?
Aye.
President Jay?
Aye.
Student board member?
Aye.